We'll call the meeting in order for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, December 17, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 10, 2024, and B being a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, January 7, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, Resolution C through H. The Board can take them and block if they'd like, plus potential adjournment. Motion to approve and adjourned by Rogers and second by Morgan. We'll open up discussion for Resolution C through H. Was there anybody that would like to comment on resolutions for Board of Equalization? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That concludes Board of Equalization. We'll jump into Board of Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. Before we jump into the formal agenda here, just a few quick items and points of personal privilege, I'll start with myself. I just want to thank the Board for the support throughout these last few weeks. My dad's funeral was last Tuesday, and obviously, business still got done because we have amazing people that keep everything going. And so, I'm thankful for the words of support during this time, and it was, it was good to participate and go through the motions of everything that happens in these things. So, it's good to be back. And, and we also want to highlight the passing of a colleague who was formerly on the Commissioners, and I think Commissioner Morgan was going to say a few words on that as well, and potentially others.
Yes, thank you, and again, very sorry about the loss of your father a few weeks ago. Sunday, I found out that Mark Kraft passed on Saturday evening about 9:15, and I used to sit right next to Mark, who did an excellent job on the county board and also on the city console, and my prayers and everything go out to his family and to thank Mark for the great things he did in Omaha on Southeast Corner, 16th and Leavenworth. His father, Leo Kraft, was quite an individual, and Mark followed in those footsteps, and maybe did a great service at their facility there on that corner. And he will be missed, and his service will be at 131st and Pacific on 11:30 on Wednesday. I plan to go to that at 10:00 at Israel. So, with that, I know Mary Ann served with Mark a number of years, and that probably can add to what I've said. Thank you.
Again, big loss. You know, we lost, all of you don't remember the former Commissioner George Mills, but he just passed a few weeks ago as well, so none of you served with him. But yeah, it's very sad to see those that have served and done well here for Douglas County, but we wish their families the best.
Definitely. Thank you. And so, the last quick item under personal privilege that I just want to mention is really an advance notice that under Finance Committee, I will be introducing and proposing an addition of an emergency item that will reaffirm past ARPA decisions that were made this year. So, there's not going to be any new business necessarily, but it's going to reaffirm past business just as a technicality, since those funds need to be officially obligated by the end of this year per the ARPA law. So, I just want to give advance notice to the public that that's going to be under Finance, and we'll explain why it was kind of a last-minute item to dot those Ts. So, we, I asked Patrick to lay out a few copies for the public to read ahead of time if they so desired, and we're also going to read it word for word once we get there under Finance Committee, so that it goes into the record. And I'll also ask Colby to help me display the item under the, what's that machine called technically?
Projector.
The projector, yeah. See, simple word there. So, we're going to display it under the projector, so also the viewing audience can view it as well. So, I just want to give advance notice that that's coming under Finance as an added emergency item that will be proposed. With that being said, we'll go into the formal agenda that is finalized and on the agenda here. So, items 1, A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 10, 2024, and B is the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, December 17, 2024. Do we have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump into our consent agenda. Items 2, A through L. Do we have a motion and second for discussion? Motion to approve by Rogers, second by Morgan. We are now under consent agenda, items A through L. Is there any comments or questions for consent agenda? Did you have something there?
It's a little hard to hear because of echo from these. Anyway, Larry Store, 501-5, Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I am generally opposed to E, H, and K, possibly C. I think the state and local governments are moving away from the intent of non-federalized governance. And I'd just like to comment that we're moving into another new era of revitalization of our Constitution, at which there will be lots of changes coming forward that you need to be ready for. And one of those is such as removing citizens' comments from bodies like this, completely against the intent of the Constitution and First Amendment rights. And there'll be a lot of undoing to the things that you've done under the governance bodies, cohabitating with bodies such as the National Association of Counties.
Larry, that's not on the agenda. Couldn't you speak to an agenda item?
But you guys work for us, not them, and we need to know what you're doing with them. And the money you spend on the National Association of Counties, cities, et cetera, are our taxes.
That's not on the agenda, Larry. Can you speak to an agenda item?
We object to that. We'll be changing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other comments or questions on consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll next go into Section 4, Presentation. We have one being the presentation of December Department of Corrections Report by Director Myers as a follow-up to last week. Director Myers?
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You do have the correct report in front of you today. This is a report for November of 2024. Jumping right in, pardon me, to enclosure number one, Administrative Services and Personnel. After the fifth month of the fiscal year, we are $3,254,006 under budget. Half of this is, are reserved for projects that have not hit our budget yet. So, while that is good news, that number is a little inflated for the moment. $267,187 were spent on overtime costs, which is a decrease of nearly $90,000 from the previous month. We will be completing strategic, excuse me, strategic inmate management training in December. So, we hope to obtain even a further decrease in overtime expenses when that investment in our staff time is complete. Over $900,000 were processed by our records division. Five officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in November, including one retirement. Two officers were promoted from CO1 to CO2. As of November 30, we were 102% staffed among all correctional officer ranks. This includes the 16 officers who were in field training at that time. And I want to congratulate Officer Nicholas Stella on his retirement after nearly 24 years of service to the Douglas County Department of Corrections. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 13 individuals in community corrections, saving a combined 68 bed days in the jail. Work release admitted 20 individuals, house arrest admitted 46, RAP, a reentry assistance program, admitted 19, and two of their participants achieved a GED. Pardon me, Commissioners. Reentry Services and Therapeutic Communities, 61 individuals were admitted to therapeutic community housing units. There are currently 123 individuals on the GED waitlist, and there are 62 active students. One individual in the jail achieved a GED. 16 individuals were referred to the Intensive Outpatient Treatment Program. We will beginning, it probably has already begun, a women's intensive outpatient treatment program in the jail. We have, this is a program operated by CMHC by a grant we mutually applied for several years ago, and through COVID and difficulty in hiring mental health professionals, it's taken a while for us to get a separate program for women, so I'm glad to see that that finally has been accomplished. And 25 individuals received substance use disorder evaluations. There were 295 individuals placed on pre-trial release. There are 1,317 individuals who were supervised on pre-trial release over the course of the month. 577 individuals participated in the 24/7 sobriety program. 157 individuals were supervised via GPS monitors. That saved, theoretically saved, 3,442 jail bed days. Pre-trial release theoretically saved Douglas County $585,140 in detention costs. And law library usage on the tablet system continues to demonstrate decreased access with cost efficiencies. And it's probably a good point for me to say that we've also been able to reduce another position. As you're aware, with the tablets, we're at, that the access to family visitation has become much greater at a much lower cost. As expected, that decreased the amount of foot traffic for people coming to visit in our lobby, and so we have been able to pull back lobby staffing because there really was not enough workload to maintain the staffing that we had there. So, again, another, the tablets have enabled us to at least eliminate two FTEs from our budget. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Recording of all compliance data, related data continues. Our next audit will be conducted by the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, which will occur in 2025, and we don't have dates on that audit yet, but that's the next one up. Enclosure number four, Our Population. There are 1,230 admissions and 1,258 releases. Our high count was 996. That was our high count, Commissioners. We rarely dipped below 1,000. We stayed below 1,000 the entire month. Our low count was 927. I've never seen a number that low, except for in December, which I'll tell you about next month, which has actually dipped slightly lower still on one day. The average daily population was 956, another modern era record low. The average length of stay for inmates released in November, the overall average length of stay was 30 days. 53% of inmates stayed longer than 72 hours. The average length of stay for those inmates was 58 days. 47% of inmates were released within 22 hours, excuse me, 72 hours of being booked, and the average length of stay for those individuals was 1.33. There were 129 custodial sanctioned bed days. The US Marshal population decreased. The average felony pre-trial population was 645, a decrease. The average daily misdemeanor pre-trial population was 123, a slight increase. Probation violations decreased. 20% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 67% of our population were minorities. 15% of our population were female. 19% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. That is a slight increase. Turning to enclosure number five, Medical and Mental Health. There were 786 intake screenings, 394 health and physical assessments. There were 16 emergent medical care transports. Seven of those were by 911. Those resulted in five hospital admissions, which resulted in 25 total days of hospitalization. Our off-site specialty appointments were 20. We have seen a downward trend in this statistic since we transitioned to Wexford. They seem to make more of an effort to bring in resources to the facility to handle some specialty services rather than sending everybody out. That is a win-win. That is a win for Wexford, and it's a win for us. It's a win for our costs in terms of we don't have to staff those runs to, to those appointments. And it's a security advantage when we don't have to bring inmates out into the community. So, that's a trend we hope to see continue. There were 131 initial psychiatric assessments and 279 initial mental health assessments. 93 individuals were placed on suicide precautions. There were 155 individuals placed on drug and alcohol detox, detox protocols. There was one referral to the Board of Mental Health, which was approved. The Lincoln Regional Center waitlist has 12 individuals on it. That is an increase, and, but there are still 14 people at the Lincoln Regional Center. So, the Lincoln Regional Center, I believe, opened up additional beds, which allowed us to decrease a backlog, and now we've kind of seen that progress level out. But it's still, we're in a much better spot than where we used to be. Enclosure number six, Security Operations and Honor Guard. The crisis negotiation team was deployed to negotiate with an individual was, who was refusing to give up items that are prohibited while on suicide precautions. The incident was resolved without force being necessary. CNT also tried to gain voluntary compliance for an individual who was court-ordered for a blood draw. The individual was not cooperative, and the CERT team intervened to accomplish the objective. And speaking of our CERT team, they were deployed in that incident to assist with the blood draw, and they also participated in training relating to quelling group disturbances in housing units. There were 14 area searches conducted. Minor contraband recovered included modified items for tattooing and nuisance items such as extra linens. Significant contraband included an unidentified substance which has been submitted for testing, cash app information, lists of identifying information of inmates, and one item that was being modified into a weapon. The Honor Guard provided color guard services for our academy graduation on November 22, and three members of our Honor Guard trained with the Metro Area Honor Guard. And closure number four, Staff Development, Wellness, and Retention. 18 individuals were interviewed for correctional officers' positions. 72 applications were received. A class of approximately 20 is being assembled for our first academy of 2025, which will begin in mid-January. Over 300 staff members have completed the 24 hours of training in Strategic Inmate Management Operational Philosophy. All staff will have completed this training by the end of the year. 38 staff members responded to an internal posting to join the peer support team. And that, I think, goes to show to the culture that we are working really hard to establish, to have that number of people who want to sign up to be available basically 24 hours a day to assist their coworkers in a time of need. 11 staff members utilized the Wellness and Retention Office for assistance. Two staff members were referred to mental health, external mental health resources, and several staff morale-building holiday-focused activities are ongoing this month. Other noteworthy item, due to the successful hiring, recruiting, and training efforts, we have, we have gone from being approximately, having approximately 80 officer vacancies two years ago to maintaining authorized staffing levels for well over a year. We have seen a significant drop in overtime and a very significant drop in mandatory overtime hours. Further, it costs, it costs DCDC more than $10,000 for each new officer we hire. We have been able to drop the number of offers we hired, we hired from 158 in 2023 to 98 in 2024, with the last two academies having fewer than 20 cadets each. We have decreased the number of academies from six or seven per year to four this year, which has allowed us to do advanced, to conduct advanced training such as strategic inmate management. If our rate of attrition continues to trend as it is, we will be able to hire 80 or fewer officers in 2025. With that, I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. Is there any questions or comments from Board or from public? If not, we'll conclude our presentation. Thank you, Director Myers. All right, that was the only presentation for today. That leads us into committee, discussion, and action. We'll jump into Section 6A. Under Finance, we have Budget Report as presented, and then we have a few ARPA items to consider. We can take them one at a time. So, Section 6A 2 is a resolution allocating 7,000 ARPA funds to Douglas County Health Department for Technology Needs. Was there any, all right, motion to approve by Rogers, second by Morgan. Discussion on that item. If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero, and Mr. Chair, I do have a comment to make on the next item when, when you allow me to speak on it.
Number three. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, DNS Douglas County Clerk. So, we had to, the last, and I'm going to provide a replacement resolution to you all here, but we had the last, now therefore be it resolved paragraph. It was just kind of like a copy and paste, pasting error. They had, the resolution contained some wording from a previous ARPA resolution. So, basically, we took the, the whereas that contains basically what all this is proposing to be funded, we just put that in the final now therefore be it resolved paragraph as well. So, I just wanted to note that for the record, and I'll provide the replacement resolution right now.
Okay, but all, all amounts remain the same?
Correct. It's just, yeah, just the last paragraph needed to be corrected. It was just kind of a typo error, but nonetheless, need to be corrected. So, but I'll pass this around you all right now.
Okay, just as a brief summary on resolution number three under Finance regarding ARPA discretionary utilization, there's $100,000 that is being proposed to go to UNMC College of Public Health, $100,000 to College of St. Mary, $50,000 to Mercy High School, $50,000 to the Mexican-American Historical Society, $25,000 to the Big Gardens, and $50,000 to Douglas County Historical Society. These proposals have been passed through Deloitte, which is our third-party kind of objective reviewer to make sure that these fall under ARPA law guidelines and are allowable under ARPA, and they have been approved by Deloitte to move forward. So, with that being said, is there a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Discussion on these items. If not, we'll vote.
Just with the resolution as amended?
Yeah, resolution as amended with the clarification that Mr. Clerk specified.
All right. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take up the emergency item and explain what that exactly is here in a moment. Oh, she got it, very good, thank you.
Commissioners, we should probably add the, uh, item first before we.
Got it.
So for, and first you'd have to declare, uh, an emergency, you have to have a motion to declare an emergency, a second and a vote on that before you can actually consider the item.
Motion to declare emergency to add an agenda, agenda item by Rogers, second by Morgan, and we're gonna explain what the item is here after this initial vote. The second vote approves the item, the first vote just declares the emergency that allows for the addition of the item. So, the first vote is to add the item and declare the emergency, there's a motion second on the table. And we'll vote on that.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote on this one. Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to declare an emergency passes six to zero.
Okay, so now we're gonna explain what the item is, uh, and why it's on the table, so.
Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator, it's not up here, but it's on that overhead, you have copies, so. As you all know, uh, the county board previously approved the construction of a dedicated mental health addition at the Douglas County Department of Corrections and construction of a new Douglas County Community Mental Health Center on the 42nd Street campus. With the intent of using ARPA funds for both of those projects, that was discussed numerous times, acted upon. But, um, talking about some ARPA issues on late Friday after the agenda had been finalized and published, I went back and looked at the resolutions that approved these projects and approved the contracts for these projects. And I didn't see in those resolutions where it specifically allocated, uh, an actual dollar amount from ARPA funds for these projects. And I just wanna make, I wanted to make sure that we have a clear paper, paper trail and a records to provide, uh, to the federal government if there is an audit. Make sure we fully comply and that there's no, oh, we didn't miss anything. So all this resolution does is specifically state that the county board allocates the 33,703,500 from its ARPA allocation towards the mental health addition project to the Department of Corrections. And the 22.409 million in its ARPA allocation towards the cost of the construction of the new Douglas County Mental Health Center on the 42nd Street campus. And that's, that's it. It also says one more thing, it does say that if there are any ARPA dollars left after the above listed projects are done, so let's just say for example that those projects come in under budget. Then it just says expresses the intent to allocate remaining, the remaining ARPA dollars to use towards the, the qualifying, ARPA qualifying repairs, renovations and upgrades at the Douglas County Health Center that the county board had previously discussed but never took action on. That's it.
And, um, as a addition, it's all this to specify these items because the law states that by the end of 2024, we have to obligate and allocate these funds towards a specific project. And then actually use them by the end of 2026, but. With the year, year end upon us, we're just making sure all these things are clarified, even though the board had previously voted on these two projects at Corrections and Community Mental Health already. We're just specifying the amounts just to be extra cautious, so. We, out of, uh, in abundance of transparency, um, I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution. Just so everybody is aware of what's on it, I know it's on the screen, but it's kind of hard to read in small print, so. I'm gonna try to, um, uh, read the whole thing, so bear with me, so it says, whereas this board previously approved the following two mental health relation, or excuse me, mental health related construction projects. Number one, construction of a dedicated mental health addition to the Douglas County Department of Corrections at 710 South 17th Street, estimated cost 33, 33,703,500. And two, construction of a new Douglas County Community Mental Health Center at 1101 South 42nd Street to replace the current Community Mental Health Center, which is located in the Douglas County Health Center. Estimated cost for this project is 22,409,000. And whereas the combined cost of the two projects is estimated at 56,112,500. And whereas this board determined that these projects will be paid for with the county's American Rescue Plan Act ARPA fund allocation. And whereas federal ARPA regulations require that all of the county's ARPA funds must be allocated by December 31st, 2024. And whereas previous resolutions that approved these projects may not have clearly stated that the board was allocating specific ARPA dollar amounts towards the cost of these projects. And whereas, out of an abundance of caution, this board desires to clearly state that these ARPA, uh, state these ARPA allocations. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby allocates 33,703,500 in its ARPA allocation towards the cost of the previously approved construction of a dedicated mental health addition to the Douglas County Department of Corrections at 710 South 17th Street. Be it further resolved that this board hereby allocates 22,409,000 in its ARPA allocation towards the cost of the previously approved construction of a new Douglas County Community Mental Health Center at 1101 South 42nd Street. Be it further resolved that to the extent that there are any county ARPA dollars left, after the above listed dollars are expended, the remaining ARPA dollars shall be used towards qualifying, repairs, renovations and upgrades at the Douglas County Health Center. Due to this date, the 17th day of December, 2024. Do I have a motion and second for this emergency item? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, discussion on the emergency item that's being added today.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'll revise and extend the remarks from earlier. You know, people don't get it, the federal government is telling us they're running out of money. And you people keep running to the state for ARPA dollars, the state keeps running to them for ARPA dollars. Most of what I read on these things have nothing to do with an illness, excuse me. ARPA emergency was for an illness, not for construction. With the new administration coming in, you might very well be subject to what is called clawback. Paying back all the money you've got, going for new windows, new furnaces, new, uh, this and new that. That traditionally in this country, a business provides out of their own pocket, not taxpayer dollars or federal taxpayer dollars. It's all my taxideries dollars, I pay them, I pay you. I don't like it. This was against the concept of a republic. You're running to the government to control us, they are going to control you and they're not supposed to. All of you have supported all this and when the foot hits the pedal after January 6th, there'll be a lot of people having worse than red faces and probably called out for it. And all of you supported all of this highway robbery. Why not give it to me? I was affected by COVID, for God's sakes, let me build a new house, thank you.
Thank you, any other items, or excuse me, questions or comments on the emergency item? If not, we'll vote.
Alright, again, that was a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. I'll start the voting right now. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to Administrative Services Committee, we have one item, the County Commissioner Committee on Artificial Intelligence Update by Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I just wanted to give a, a kind of media update and kind of allude a little bit to what's going on with the committee and kind of set the stage for what's to come in the next couple of years, so. Diane Wallace will give that presentation and we'll probably have a little bit to say on the end, but basically this is just informative to let everybody know where we're at and where we're proceeding. I'll turn it over to Diane.
Diane Wallace, Douglas County's IT Coordinator, good morning. I've been working with Commissioner Rogers and I'll give you some information, update what we've been up to. First is a little bit of a timeline information. Commissioner Rogers did a board resolution that started the committee, uh, we did that back in June. And that established the committee and we also obtained some consulting services from augmented AI. And it tied to that resolution as a charter, it kind of outlines the purpose of the committee. We took the approach of soliciting our employees for members based on that they're interested in AI. And that was, that approach was very successful, we've got over 20 participants. It's across douglascounty.com and our vendor attending these monthly meetings. After we got up and running, we decided to form a subcommittee. And that subcommittee is focused on, uh, more producing documentation, so education, communications, legal, ethical considerations. And we include help from both county attorney and HR. That got going in October and we're also having monthly meetings on the subcommittee. One of the things that we discovered is that we're able to leverage our NACO resources. NACO has a focus on AI also. We have a number of our employees that are in the NACO leadership training and they're talking up and bringing back knowledge, reference materials, checklist, questionnaires that are very helpful. There's a specific document, the NACO AI County Compass that we're using as a reference. And we're also finding other outside materials from groups like legal groups or HR groups that were, um, getting education from them and can reuse some of their concepts. One of the things we're doing is we're looking for success stories, because AI is all about making us better, making things more efficient. And so we're gonna continue to look for success stories. The first one comes from dot com. We had the project where all of our websites have to be ADA compliant. And to review those and find errors and make them compliant would have taken a lot of human effort. Dot com was able to find an AI powered tool that helps them find the problems on the website so that those corrections could be made. It also adds, as you'll see in the right side there, that blue box, some real-time citizen things that can make the website more accessible, make some adjustments. So that really helped us want to become compliant, but also to do it with a lot less effort. So what we are doing is the committee looked at, asked for ideas from our committee members for possible use cases where AI could be incorporated. And we got a nice long list of some great ideas. Those ideas are on the spectrum from more easy to more complex. With more complex comes more expensive. So in looking at those, reviewing them, ranking them, um, the thing that came to the top is a very good first project is improving our websites and use a knowledge database and chat. That was gonna be like the biggest bang for our buck for initial project. It will be citizen facing, um, will improve our websites, but then think of it like a Q and A where you can as a conversation ask a question. Think of the question is, I want to know about property tax. And this engine will then be able to answer back, pulling information from various websites and documents. So discussions are underway with our vendor to get that up and running and some more will come on that next year. We also are looking at training to get just a good foundational education out there. We have an online training module using AI safely, that's being evaluated by the subcommittee. We're gonna talk about it and hopefully we can offer that up to all of our employees online next year. There are some things that that, um, training refers to that we need to make sure we have, such as county approved AI tools. What's the county's AI policies? So we need to get some of those things in place and then we can release the tool. This is a view of what that's gonna look like, just the first intro screen. So you can, um, listen to it, click through the slides, um, get some very good foundational information. And hear about the efficiencies, the benefits, but also some of the cautions around AI. So our initial website project, getting into that a little bit deeper. We, we looked at some initial examples of what could be done with property tax, vaccinations, tornado damage. If you think of it like by topic, what kind of a topic, what kind of a question would a citizen have? That's how this is structured. We're gonna be able to process the informa- we're gonna be looking at informations about the process, how do I do something? But not specific individual information, not what is my tax, but the, the process around these things. Benefits are our websites are gonna improve content because that's what gets pulled into this Q and A. It's gonna be easier for citizens to get answers to their questions in a conversational way. And you know, it may lower some phone calls into departments because they can self-service. So this is a screen chat of what the vendor has to offer. I know it's hard to read, but basically the citizen would enter a question and then this chat tool would come back with some possible answers. They could click on a link, drill in, they could ask another question, back and forth until hopefully they get their information. And thi- this property tax, for example, that's information being pulled from multiple department websites. Cesar, Treasurer, the BOE, so it's not, we're not pointing it at a website, we're pointing it at a question in order to get some very good, robust, accurate answers. Another example, how do I get my kid vaccinated? Same kind of structure, the question's different, the database with the answers behind it would be different. But it's gonna look and feel the same, it's branded as Douglas County. And then it, it basically shows the picture that we take the website and we put it in and we get this thing called known good answers. So the, the AI is taking the website information, parsing through that, finding answers to questions, getting it laid out. We can see what's inside as far as what is the question, what is the answer, is that accurate, does it need to be fine tuned? Do we need to go back and add more to the website, change, improve the website? But that, that's how it flows and not just websites, it could be documents too, again, like a process document. And then the, the really nice thing about this is once we have this knowledge database of question and answers, it can, it can drive that Q and A engine that we saw, but it can actually also, the second box down there, it can also basically create a webpage so that we can lay all this stuff out and people can kind of read through and, and see answers without having to ask questions and get answers. So there's basically two outputs from this engine. So more to come on that project, that's what we've been demoing, working with the vendor. Discussions are underway, we're gonna get some paperwork to really define that project, how to get started, how to continue on and expand. Are there any questions or comments from Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you so much, questions, comments, Commissioner Boyle?
Just a, a quick question, how did you choose this vendor?
Commissioner Rogers brought the vendor to us, I think there's a NACO connection.
We, basically, um, I had the privilege of sitting on a, like a national committee that they established. And this was a, a gentleman that had, that had worked with NACO, had been kind of vetted by them. Worked with, um, San Jose County, um, was working with Cook County, a couple of sides, and so, um, and he had done some work, um, had some work itself with Microsoft and some other people. So they had worked with a couple of counties, I could talk to them, see how that, that piece was. And so they, they're the only people I kind of knew that were in that field. And, um, so we had some back and forth and based on the experience that they had with some other counties and this, that's how we got to the, the choice of this group.
I feel like AI is still a black box, that I don't, I don't really understand it. And it's, uh, does, uh, this particular vendor do more with governmental types of agencies or does, is that even relevant?
Well, you know, websites are everywhere, commercial, government, right? So it's kind of a generic topic and they, those screenshots we showed you, they demonstrated, they went through, ingested our public websites. They went through, ingested our public websites and produced stuff. So we're very confident we can work with them to get this first project done. It's a very good point though, there's a lot of vendors out there. AI is very hot and it's widespread and it's growing. So we're basically focusing in on this first project with this first vendor. Then, you know, maybe we need to look wider, more specific needs for specific projects. But this was very helpful and collaborative, they've attended all of our committee meetings and I think we're feeling pretty good about working with them for the funds that have already been approved by the board in those past resolutions. But we're not tied into not looking further in the future also.
And it's just, it's just interesting, I don't know if, I guess, citizens can see at the bottom of our screen too, that AI is involved in recording the, or taking notes for this. And so I was, again, that whole concept, I feel like I'm, now I'm the parent that my kids joke about, that I don't get it.
Well, there's a lot of not getting it and it really truly is a black box. And we don't want to, we're not going to attempt to make everybody AI experts. We want to have that education be more general concept so when they see it, they understand kind of what's going on. A lot of the focus is on security and not losing our data and keeping our data inside our environment. And one of the things that the subcommittee needs to look at is these note takers, where it's recording meetings or transcribing meetings, there's a lot of benefit to that, but there's also some legal questions, concerns. Teresa is on our committee and subcommittee and so we're going to come back with some policy guidelines around it too so that people better understand just from an end user perspective, not what's inside the black box, but where does my stuff go and is it okay or should it be not part of this meeting? We have some work to do and it's been, it's an exciting, big topic, you know? But it's been a little difficult to try to get our arms around it and figure out what to go do first. But it's feeling really good right now for this first project and next steps.
And I think, of course, security is of utmost importance and so I'm sure that all controls are in place to limit exposure in that regard.
And that's where we do have dot com involved and the dot com security manager. And so we're looking at it from a technical, from a legal, from an HR ethical perspective. The other aspect is that all of the software that we already have and use is starting to incorporate AI, right? So it's, it's, it's just going to become creeping into all of our lives and processes and we just need to better understand, how does that particular software do AI and is it okay? Do we have any concerns? More like creating the yardstick to be able to judge good or caution and not necessarily needing to understand inside the black box.
Thank you. Anybody else, Commissioner Rogers?
Yep, and just to add, I think, to what Commissioner Boyle was saying, you know, the overall thing of the committee was one is to take the scare factor off because people think this is a new thing, but for the last four or five years, you've been doing an email and your email, you see prompts at the end that allow you to hit tab and finish it. That's AI, I mean, the text that you had that's finishing, that's it. Now it's just become more complex in the language learning models where it can basically almost think for itself. And so the whole, just to just to get a grip on that. I think to add on what Diane said, the three things I think the board should get out of this is the property tax project, the vaccine project and the emergency management piece. The one the committee agreed to go with more is the property tax piece because that's the hottest piece where questions come and it's coming for the Board of Equalization session. And I think we decided to go to that because the BOE is what the board controls, even though the assessor has an aspect. And the hope is to get to the point where we can play with it live now in an atmosphere. And the only way to really get control of it is, you know, like an athlete, you need reps, you need to get shots up. And this gives us the reps to do it. Starting in February, that's the most active time of BOE, that's when you get the most calls. And I think a lot of the point is to try to take it off, this misconception is that AI is going to cost jobs. And actually, that's not the intent of it. The goal is to make you use your time more efficiently. I know there's, there's drafts, two letters that have saved me three hours that I've done with the initial feedback of this and then can make in my own voice. And the hope is to get everybody here ethically able to use it, but productively able to use the power of it and the force, it can be used for good or it can be used for bad. And the goal now is to get a grip on to use it bad. I will say that, based on what the board allocated, the property tax one is where we're going with, but there is a discussion the committee is going to have is whether we may ask the board to consider increasing that amount a little more because emergency management sees some opportunity with just a lot of the questions that happened during the tornado, we're going to have another emergency event and definitely there with health. So if the property tax piece goes, there may be an opportunity here in March that we may came back to ask the board to let us have a little more money to run the same chat, experiment with those opportunities. But the goal was just to let everybody know, it took us a couple of meetings, it took Diane a couple of meetings to get a grip on it, to kind of see where it is, but I think we're in a good spot now to really learn and get some feedback. I can't say enough from the involvement in the departments and what they brought to it. And the other thing is, I think, once we get a grip on it, the package that was asked for, for the board to approve for Mike Shumalo and GIS, it's just mass potential there. They did a project for the city where they save manpower by using the drone technology that they have, that we invested in and saved them hours to be able to go and make all the sidewalks across the city ADA compliant. So there's a whole lot of other things that can be done with this, once people get a grip of it and the more we can run with it, the more opportunity comes.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this presentation?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. This is outrageous. We didn't hire you guys to come up with this stuff. This is stuff of out of the past, out in the future. And this is the death of America. I won't be able to know if that's you or not. Some people say Joe Biden isn't Joe Biden, he's not really there. Conspiracy theory? Well, I don't think so because now you're pushing it on us here, through my tax dollars. You're not representing me. Maureen, you're supposed to, but there's six others against you. Okay? And we're not winning. And you carry a very soft stick, but you have a very, a soft voice, but a very large stick. You have too much power, sir.
Let's keep it to the AI topic.
Excuse me, excuse me, I have First Amendment rights, Mr. Garcia.
But the agenda item is AI committee.
We are against this type of thing. This is Buck Rogers, this is toilet green, this is 1984. I do not hire any of you for that. My tax dollars say no, and if this is what you're going to push on us, you should step down because 1776, on this date, France joined us in revolting from a long train of abuses of a king. And we are restarting it again now in January. We, the people, will take this back. And people like you that are going to push this on us will be hiding out. You'll be found out and you'll be asked to step down. And not necessarily through the voting booth. This has got to stop. We, the people, want our government back and we'll be going for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the presentation on AI committee? If not, thank you for that, we'll keep moving forward on the agenda. Next committee that had some items was the Health and Human Services and this was actually by error, these two resolutions were supposed to be on the consent agenda, but they got placed here, which is fine, so we'll go ahead and take them up here at this point. They both deal with a termination of a contractor at Douglas County Health Center, so we can take these both at the same time if the board desires. Most to approve, Resolutions 1 and 2 under F, second by Morgan, discussion on this. If not, we'll vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll jump into Human Resources where we have two items. The first one is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented. We also have number two, the Resolution Amending and Restating the Douglas County Retiree Medical Plan. Director Bush, were you going to say a few words on this?
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to mention, this is Karen Butch, I'm the HR Director for the county. I just quickly wanted to mention that this restatement is necessary in order to maintain our retiree plan as being separate from an ACA-covered plan. We, the prior document did not specifically state that you could not have two or more active employees on the plan. So we need to do this in order to maintain compliance with the ACA. And so the other change, just to be totally transparent, is that we have also, we had also decided in a prior discussion in a HR committee meeting several years ago, when we did the restatement that we would remove, we had talked about it in that HR committee about removing individual dependents that were over the age of 26 under the, under this plan. So there are currently two people that are covered, that are aged 26 or over. And we have been notifying all of the retirees over the last year that we would be stopping this coverage and that they would be able to potentially get coverage on the marketplace. So just wanted to make both of those things clear to you and if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Karen. Is there a motion second for discussion? Motion approved by Rogers, second by Morgan. Is there any comments or questions on this item? If not, we'll vote. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move forward here, we do have a need for executive session. Before we get into that vote, I do want to remind the public and everyone that the next two weeks, we are off on the 24th and the 31st. We do not have a Commissioners' Board meeting. We shall return on January 7th, 2025. So we do want to wish everyone happy holidays and a good winter break. And with that, we do have a need for executive session for the purposes of litigation, legal advice, labor negotiations and contract negotiations. Do you have a motion of second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, to go into executive session. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. The board should now go into executive session for the purposes of litigation, legal advice, labor negotiations and contract negotiations. Again, happy holidays and good winter break to everyone, thank you.
Recording stopped.
I mean, we're all connected somehow, right? Yeah, that's right. Hi Dan.
Hey, we are.
I'm going to, I'm going to Louisville.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, it's gonna be insane, I'm so excited.
When do you leave tomorrow, or?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
We, uh, we weren't, we weren't gonna go and then my daughter's like, Mom, we should go, I think they're gonna win it all. And I was like, after, we went to the game on Sunday, I was like, after watching them play, they were just like on fire. I was like, man, we really beat them. Cause when they played ten straight, and the neighbors won, and I'm like, let's just go.
You know, you know what's funny? The one where I did watch a lot of her, like, best of the game, she liked that one so much.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think he's, um, uh, kind of, really, really out and, yeah. My dad, my dad, we, we've gone and watched the neighbors win, they fought, um, we had a game last year, it was really fun. Um, not the outcome, I just feel like that was a really good ending. I was like, unbelievable. Um, but my dad and my parents, and I was like, driving, so I'm like, I'm not having stuff like working here.
They got, uh, well, I don't know.
I've never been there.
It's, it's kinda like similar to, I haven't been there in a long time.
They have a house of art?
I remember thinking it was kinda similar. I don't know. But just like, it's, I mean, like this kind of medium-sized city on a real, real, really, really high, over.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Borgeson. The motion passed four to zero. Uh, Commissioners Rogers and Friend were absent from the vote and Commissioner Kavanaugh was absent from the meeting. We adjourned at twelve thirty six P M.